Okay, good evening and welcome to the Village of Mamaronek Budget Work Session for today, April 21st. Welcome all. I talked to Jerry beforehand in the order of departments we're going to go tonight. And the first one who is going to be up is our Marine Education Specialist Kyle Troy. I happened to be cruising Facebook a little bit this morning and I learned what a photo plankton is because Kyle was teaching a class live. And I know that whales eat those and whales eat krill now. Sort of the biggest animal in the ocean eats the smallest form of life in the ocean. So Kyle, there's your introduction.
Mayor, can you open the meeting, please?
I need a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi Kyle.
Hi.
Can you tell us a little bit about your budget?
A little bit about my budget. We were supposed to hire on my first my first full-time person starting in, I believe it was June or July. And obviously, my season is postponed. I did have part-time staff budgeted in there and added a little more money to keep the tanks going throughout the winter. We wanted to have our first full season. It was a, it can be a great season, a little disappointed, but yeah, that's about the gist of what we added.
Okay, Jerry, why don't you tell me, what did we take out of Kyle's budget?
Mayor, what we did, and obviously, and Kyle touched on it just for a second, we wanted to have a full season. Kyle closes the education center during the winter. She continues to do her classes and other things and goes out and does the public outreach that the Marine Education Center is known for. But we were going to bring in someone, we're going to bring on someone in June or July and then have them trained as an assistant naturalist move throughout the season, the busy season, and then continue having the education center open in the wintertime. That has changed. And so what we're proposing is that on page 128 of 179 that we would bring on the assistant naturalist this time next year, basically March 1st of next year, to prepare for the summer season and then go to what we have to obviously postpone is a full season and a winter. So the full winter will be the the projected full winter opening will be winter of 2021, 2022. So we reduced that $39,000 line down to $10,000, which is just a few months of salary. In addition to that, under 140, I'm sorry, 71460120 paid interns.
Yeah.
Reduce that line to $1,000 because we may not be able to open for a couple of months. And so we won't need all of the staff that we anticipated to help Kyle out. Kyle does a lot by herself, but she also relies on during the busy times. And obviously, you know, her projected opening was April 25th, which we now have to push back and really don't know when we're going to open the Marine Education Center. So we just reduced that line as well to $1,000. So she has a reduction of of about $39,000 in her budget and it's all personnel. That's the gist of it.
Does anybody have any questions for Kyle? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead Nora.
All right, you know, it's sorry that it's working out this way and thank you for teaching remotely.
Yeah.
I love it. At least I could do something.
Yeah, it was interesting to watch because there were obviously a group of kids who were on live and they were answering the questions. Kyle was posing questions about stuff that they had touched upon, I imagine, in other lessons. And so I didn't jump in. I knew a couple of answers.
Yeah, it's cool. About 6,000 people each video it gets to. So, and they show you what areas. So I have, I had Lebanon today, which was crazy.
That's amazing.
It's weird to see. I'm like, where, how random?
Oh, nice.
Yeah, it's fun.
It was really good. It was fun. I only watched about five minutes, but it
They only range here about 15 to 20 minutes.
Kyle, do you know about what the revenue the center brings in every year? I know there are birthday parties.
Yeah, so it would have been much more this year. That's why we had kind of decided it was good to bring on the full-time. It's gotten crazy. Well, it was going to be crazy this year. But this year, we were planning on bringing in at least, I mean, 30,000 because I have all the elementary, I was supposed to have all the elementary schools from New Rochelle come in and I had an outside donator for that and it was increased from last year, which was 10,000. They were going to increase it to 20,000 and the birthday parties are four times a month and those are 300 apiece. And then I do outside groups such as Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, stuff like that. And that's all 150. I go into schools. So it was gonna, it was growing considerably. So I'm doing the videos to kind of keep the amp up, but it was gonna be, it was gonna be much more this year, for sure.
Are you still doing the oyster beds?
Yeah, I'm still doing that with him remotely. Yeah, right now we're working on it. That's a huge project.
It is, but it's an interesting project, which hopefully will have a long-term positive impact.
Yeah, and I'm doing the floating wetlands again remotely with the Eagle Scouts. And I also am writing grants. I don't know if we'll get them, but I'm trying to write as many as I can to get some more money in.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Ms. Troy?
I have a question to understand the change. So essentially, eight interns, which were nine, 11 actually, it's coming down to nine?
Coming down to 1,000 Victor.
Ah, to 1,000?
1,000.
Okay, but it used to be 11 anyway, not 10?
Yes, it used to be 11. It was proposed as 11, yes.
Yeah, then the seasonal staff remains, right?
The seasonal staff remains for the rest of the summer into September.
That's the twin, that's 10. And then the other, the other help would come in as a part-time staff? Or how is, how would that work? What is your proposal? That's what I need, want to ask to understand.
You're watching.
So it would appear, the new budget would appear more, part-time staff would appear 10,000?
The assistant naturalist, because part-time staff I zeroed out. I zeroed out the part-time staff.
Right, but that's what my question, how do you then
What we're going to do.
Full position, typically we fund a position.
Yeah, so what we did was we zeroed out the part-time staff and funded a full-timer, where we didn't have to hire the part-time staff since we're going to hire a full-timer. That plan has changed and has been postponed to March of next year when we would hire the full-timer, still continuing to not require the part-time staff. And then the seasonals fill in for Kyle based on her programming. And I think you did, you did bring in last year, seasonals on Saturday, I remember, correct?
I did. I had four paid interns and that was where the money would go to, but since this year camp, I mean, obviously, my busy season is pretty much canceled at this point. So they come in for the camps because I have three outs, I have the Mamaronek camp as well as two outside camps and then I have other programs coming in. So it's, it can't just be me and my part, my one assistant. So I have four paid interns and usually college kids, but this year we don't, we don't need them, obviously.
I understand the help, the nature of help you and you, Kyle. My question really is going to, the type of job that is the assistant naturalist, is that a CSEA kind of person? What kind of employees that? That's what I'm getting at, Jerry.
It's a non-union civil service position.
Okay.
So the other camps that you are bringing in, there are Mamaronek camps or where are they?
Mamaronek, I do different, like the, I do the, I'm forgetting the name right now, but I do the Kovale Yacht Club in Rye and then Mamaronek camp. And I only do a, the third camp a couple of days because I need that assistant naturalist to do the outside camp while I do Mamaronek camp. Since Mamaronek camp's so crazy, I don't extend it past the three camps.
And so when you do the outside camps, what revenue do we get from that?
That depends on how many weeks, but last year, oh, I have to remember, it was like 6,000 for four weeks.
But you're not there full-time.
No, it's an hour, an hour, three days a week.
You're like a special.
Yes, exactly.
Like a program.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Kyle?
Mayor, one thing that I wanted to point out while the board is assembled is that in the past, Kyle has been under the supervision of Barry in the Parks Department. Earlier this year, I changed that where she is now, in my opinion, considered a department head. And so she reports directly to me and she and I correspond with the Marine Education Center's needs and also her programming needs and her schedule, especially when at some point during the season, she ends up working seven days a week sometimes because of the intensity of the programs. So I just wanted to point that out, that Kyle, in my opinion, is considered a department head for this village.
I have a question about the possibility to ramp up later in the summer, how quickly we could turn that around? If we have the possibility of opening anything, would it be possible to open the Marine Recreation Center for, you know, two kids at a time? I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I can't imagine, but I'm wondering how quickly you can open up.
I have the tanks running now. I'm still, I still have the fish in the tanks. I'm hope, I was hoping to open up in May. I'm just a positive thinker, but I know that's not going to happen. I mean, the hope is at least August, maybe September, and I'll have it ready to go. It's ready to go. I am hoping, you know, I'm hoping to do some things while I have the time, make it even better. But yeah, I mean, the hope is August, hopefully. I don't know if that's going to happen.
Kelly, it's a controlled environment. If we needed to and allow, you know, one a child with their parent to come in and then just keep everybody kind of in line outside, we have that flexibility to do that. We're lucky in that regard to have that flexibility. Not every, not every facility can manage, you know, multiple people like we could at the education center.
Right. I'm just trying to keep in my head what we can open, what we can do as things, you know, as the restrictions loosen up. So thanks Kyle, I appreciate it.
We have a long line to
Yeah, I hope. There's already people knocking on the doors. I'm like, guys, knock.
Thank you Kyle.
Thanks Kyle.
Thanks.
Should I sign off now, guys? Okay, great.
Unless you want to stay.
It's so fun, but I'll see you then.
Okay, the next up to bat is Mr. Akia Valley. Hi Tony.
Hi Mayor, how are you?
I'm good buddy, how are you?
Good.
This isn't your first rodeo.
He lost count, so many budgets.
Yeah.
How do you guys, how do you want to present, Tony? What do you want us to know? What are your highlights? What are your?
My highlight, we're going to perform all the work we normally perform, you know, throughout the year. You know, as you know, our biggest thing is service and taking care of the streets and the garbage and the streetlights. So, you know, we're out there constantly. We haven't stopped and we're going to do as we normally do.
Jerry, you want to go through some of the cuts and Tony?
Yeah, Mayor, a couple of things. If I can just start off with what was reduced before I went back to the department heads to ask for additional cuts is on page 66 of 179, several items. Most of those items were cut from the requested budget, for instance, and I'll use the second part of the account number. Let's see here, 66, if you go to if you go to
What account number is that, Jerry?
I'm looking at 0410, 11, 21, and 33.
0410.
And 3310, Tony.
Oh, you're on 3310, okay.
3310, 0410, 11, 21, and 0433. Well, those are all numbers that Tony was able to shave and reduce prior to prior to our COVID situation. In addition to that, on page 91, if you can follow through on that. Let me see. 0260. I'm sorry, yeah, page 92.
Account number?
51100260.
Okay.
That was a replacement of the hot box.
Yes.
Right? So if you could talk to the board a little bit about, you know, why we decided to do that.
Hot boxes for asphalt?
Yeah, for during the winter months, hot asphalt to patch the potholes throughout the village. The one we have now is 18 years old and it's starting to rot out really bad and it's not holding the heat that it did.
So that's certainly a capital item, Mayor. Easily a capital item. That's something that needs to be in operating expense.
Right, then we remove the capital if we have to.
And then there's some additional cuts that Tony made just recently, a couple of days ago, after we discussed after we discussed looking at a budget, you know, with a shortfall of $2 million in revenue. So if I can turn to everyone, if I can turn everyone's attention to page 38 of 179, it's account number 16400260. Yeah, so Tony's bringing down miscellaneous equipment from 8,000 to 4,000. So that's a cut of $4,000. Next page is 88 of 179. And that's account number 40860410. And that is larvicide and the chemicals for the mosquito control. And so we still have some product from last year. And so we will, we will be able to purchase what we need for this year's mosquito control with a $10,000 budget. Next item.
From 24 to 10.
From 24 to 10, yeah, but cutting it 14,000. Next, next page, the next item is on page 155 of 179. I think we have and that, that account number is 81400421. And so Tony can explain a little bit about that suggested cut, which would reduce catch basin cleaning and river and channel cleaning to $30,000. So that's a $80,000 cut. So Tony, if you could talk a little bit about that, that would be, that would be good.
The, well, the catch basin cleaning, we're, we're going to be in good shape with the new truck that we have. And I think we've cleaned the, close to 150 basins already. The virus has slowed us down a little bit trying to, because it takes two men to do it and they're kind of on top of each other. So until this mellows out a little bit, we kind of lay them back a little bit with the catch basin cleaning. But once we get on track again, we can start moving. We're going to clean a good 300, 350 basins this year. I don't think we'll need a contractor this year at all because we did close to 500 last year. And then what we're doing this year, we should be in pretty good shape. The river cleaning, not sure when we would have time to get somebody, you know, the contractors in the rivers to clean them. We did them about six years ago and the only one that's really in fairly bad shape right now would be Jefferson Avenue Junction with the Shell Drake. The rest of the river areas that we normally have dredged out are not in bad shape at all. So we could, we could surprise without having that money this year.
Can I, Dan?
Yes.
Can you jump in on the potential, when we spoke to, when we spoke to Janine, was it last week or the week before? Did she say that there would be any funding for the Shell Drake as far as doing some kind of work at the Shell Drake?
I think it was still more related to the pre-engineering design for Water Avenue Bridge.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it wasn't anything that they were looking for some quick, some quick project to throw some funding money that way?
No, it was more pre-engineering design, plus we put her in touch with Rob Wasp from the town and the engineers at HVVA about the Waverly Avenue Bridge.
Okay. And then the final item, so Tony, on Monday, Monday morning, cut an additional 118,000 out of the budget. Final item in his list of cuts from yesterday is on page 163 of 179. And the account number is 85600413.
Trees.
That's trees and we're bringing that down to 60,000 from 80,000. We had increased it, obviously, because we wanted to get more ambitious and plant more trees, but we're giving that one a little bit of a haircut. So all of these cuts, these additional cuts have been baked into the number that Augie and I presented to you yesterday. So these are, these are not in addition to, these are included in the the budget presented that stays under the tax cap.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Akia Valley?
Thank you for the cuts, Tony. Appreciate it. I know they weren't easy.
Not at all.
I have one question. I don't know if it's for Tony or for Jerry, but we still have a line item and it's small for Mr. Nanavaji with the mosquitoes. But do you think, considering all we learned last year, that that's essential?
I think we need one more year, Nora, really. And then we would have, we would probably be on our own. And that's also something that Dominic has also said as well. So this would be the last year and that's up for, that's up for consideration of the, in front of the board on Monday night again. So we can talk about it Monday night, yeah.
Thank you.
Tony, how's the curb side pickup working?
It's working well.
Okay. What would happen if we went to, many communities have already gone to sanitation pickup once a week as opposed to twice a week. We're for sort of the anomaly there. What would happen if we did once a week?
It's, it's a, it's a heavy, it's a heavy load of garbage once a week. We're only picking up once. When we have a holiday on a Monday and we don't pick up that Monday and we pick up on Thursday, it's a lot of hard
Okay, but is it able to be handled is my question, if that happens, you know, on, because it happens several times during the year that you go to once a week because of the holiday or whatever. Is there anything that's not getting done when that happens? I guess is my question.
There are long days for the garbage van, for the sanitation man, and we have to give them extra help because of the heavy loads. During the months of November, December, January and part of February, when they have to go to Mount Vernon, it wouldn't work only because of a double, a lot of trucks will do a double load. But they're not, they're not going to be able to make it to Mount Vernon dump and come back and pick up the second load. It just, it would be too much.
So we, I didn't know that. So we'd be filling them up twice or?
Yeah, the first load is heavy and then the second load is a lot lighter, but you know, they're finishing up the route, but they still need, most of the trucks need to come in twice.
Have you seen tipping increase since everyone's home, I would assume, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody's cleaning up their closets in their attic.
Yeah, they're all, they're doing everything.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Akia Valley?
No question, but my comment to thanking for the catch basin, following this, this truck story for three and then hearing that it's working and hearing that you, you're doing a good job with it is, is just, it's good to hear. Thank you for that. And you know, all what you do, thank you so.
Oh, no problem. The men are, all the men are being trained on the truck and they're really, they want to work with the truck. They really do. So it's, it's a good thing. You give them a piece of equipment that they want to work with, they're happy to be out there doing the job. It really helps.
Who isn't it?
Yeah, we like toys. That's the truth.
I mean, that's so great to hear. I see that truck and my heart just goes, I know the flood committee gets happy.
The one thing, the one thing that I wanted to mention was that we're still on track with the town of Mamaronek to do a shared services for camera equipment for our underground utilities. And we worked with Tony and her nanny and Augie to put together a plan where we would be, we would be purchasing 50% of the equipment, but also bringing in town employees that are trained and used to and well versed with the equipment to be able to do some of the investigation that we've always had to call an outside contractor for. We now have a little bit more control over that. So we're moving ahead with that project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we could put in for a shared service grant from the state.
Correct. And so we're hoping, we're hoping that we get, you know, at least, at least half of what each of us put in to try to get that, to try to get some reimbursement on that when that all goes through.
I think that's a great example. And it's not just the cost of the equipment, which is, you can remind me, but more than anything, it's just the coordination. How much does it cost, that camera?
110?
170. The whole setup is 170.
Okay.
It's a van, it's a camera, it's the computer equipment. It's pretty elaborate. And then it didn't make sense for us or for Tony to train our people on that equipment when the town had to do it anyway. So we just came up with an hourly rate. It's not something that the town makes any money on. They just, we just pay for the hourly rate and the fringe benefits. And we bring that, the individuals in to do, to do the work. And so we would have our, we would have our sewer foreman or someone that Tony designates to go with them. But it could, it could save us a lot of money in the long run, which is what these things are all about, saving money in the long run.
That equipment goes in our capital plan?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be purchased, well, funded by our capital plan.
Okay, thank you.
Tony, thank you very much. I know this, this hasn't been an easy year for any of us. I appreciate your going back and taking another stab at it. We were on a trajectory to make a lot of improvements in this community.
make a lot of improvements in this community and hopefully we'll get back on that when this COVID thing settles down. But thank you, Tom.
No problem.
Tom, the question is whether any of the budget committees people, we should have asked that for Kyle as well. If they have any questions.
I saw one question on the YouTube livestream. It's posted in the webinar chat right now.
Do we, do we have any, has anyone, I, I don't see any hands raised. That's how we did it.
From the budget committee wants to say anything?
Well, the, the YouTube livestream has a chat window.
Yeah, we just don't, people from the budget committee, Cliff.
Okay, gotcha.
So what we did, I guess it was last week, but, okay.
How do I do this?
But the attendees can do, raise their hand and then.
They can.
But no hands are up.
No hands.
Yeah, there is a question in the Q and A about the, the larva side treatment that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing outside questions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, because that, that'll just open up Pandora's box.
Yeah.
All right, Tony, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tony. See you later.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Tony.
Who wants to go next? Augie or, Augie? Hi, Augie.
Augie, do you want to send that nifty document you sent earlier? With all the lines and where the deferments are and all that stuff? I'm trying to look for it now on my email.
Send it to the board?
Yeah, send it to the board so they could pull it up real quick.
Or if you could put it on your screen. Is that possible?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Forgot about that.
He's the most technical person on his school except for Cliff.
Technology that we're surrounded by.
I have it on my screen.
All right, Aug.
No, I have it printed. That's why I didn't, yes, print, yeah, this is beautiful. I like the color.
Yeah.
So basically, I'm just going to go get to pretty much what we try to do as far as cuts this year. In our salary line.
Augie, Augie, do me a favor, please, buddy. Speak up.
Absolutely.
And now I can't hear you at all.
Let me just fix the mic a second. Give me a second, Tom.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm at a hundred percent. Let me just try to speak a little louder. Let me share my screen again. So what we try to do this year is comply with the request for cuts. And we listed out the cuts in the adjustment column. This is not the right. Anybody see this?
Yep.
Yeah, I see it. We're in the middle of the page thirteen twenty-five, line thirty of the spreadsheet, right?
That is correct.
Augie, it was better before you could see it. Now it's too small.
Yeah, it's really small.
That better?
Nope.
Not on my screen.
It didn't change.
Okay, so I think that's the best I'm going to be able to get right now. So I could use everyone an email copy of this.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Do you want to go to the book and, and talk about it? Your budget starts on page fourteen of one seventy-nine. Do you want to refer to the book?
Absolutely. That might be easy as well.
Everyone has these pages in front of them.
I did send this to the board earlier today. That's why Nora printed it.
Yeah, I have it printed too. Can you just send it again, email, anyway?
Okay, I'll send it while you go through what you need to do.
We're all on the same page. Thanks.
Okay, so throughout salary, what we did is we had a part-time position in the budget. We deferred that position. We took it out of the budget. That was thirty thousand seven fifty-three. What we wanted to do within the budget is plan for, we have a what's his exact title, Jerry? I'm not sure, but Jonathan, who's our AP clerk currently.
Administrative, administrative intern up until August, I believe.
Was going to sit for the accountant's exam and we budgeted for that position. Kind of put a hold on all tests right now.
Correct.
Get that amount out and defer it to a later date. More and more, there's a lot of parity between management and the staff. We wanted to adjust management to make more than what the staff was making. This year is not a good year. It's a pandemic. We're going to defer that to future year. So those are the cuts out there. This total of thirty thousand seven fifty-three in salaries. We went through the supply line. A thousand came out of supplies out of two thousand. We took six hundred out of mailing costs, which is closer in line to the actual expenditures. We're going to try to live within that. We have our annual app update gap guides. We took those out. I'll try to look at them upline to see what the updates are and we'll manually put them in. That's six hundred. The annual full training, I don't think there's going to be one this year, so we're not going to budget for it. We took that out as well. For a total of sixty-four thousand four thirty, which represents eleven percent of our budget.
What percent?
Eleven.
Eleven. Thank you. And it's just over the past weekend.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we've been doing all weekend. That's exactly right.
Currently, we're working on the budget. We're preparing for a bond issuance and we're looking to make everything digital. Online payments, electronic invoicing, everything. So we could, you know, this virus is another year and a half to two years ahead of us. We need to prepare for that. So we're doing that research while we're doing budget. Along with the clerk treasurer's office, we have records office. There was no changes in there. It's pretty flat. It's forty.
What page is records?
It's the account number and it's on page. On page twenty-seven of one seventy-nine.
Twenty-seven, okay.
During the summer, we try to get somebody to come in and help Victor rearrange the boxes, help him with the shredding, getting everything coordinated and collated together. We took out twenty-five hundred out of there. I spoke to Victor. He said he believes he could do it on his own. If at a later date, we get past this pandemic and the board wants to reconsider it, we can look at it again to refund that position. But that's the only cut out of that budget. It's a twenty-five dollars for a part-time clerical person. And the last account that we have is central data processing. Which is sixteen eighty. Within sixteen eighty.
Forty, forty-four of one seventy-nine.
Well, actually, no. Forty-four of one seventy-nine. So what this pandemic has showed is that we have a heavy reliance on technology. And probably one of the most important positions aside from the village manager at this point in time is our IT coordinator. Without him, we wouldn't be meeting today or having all, everything work as smooth as it's working. Within the budget, what we did was is we also relocated a position to put the tech support specialist from PD under Cliff, because they're both managing the network and he reports to Cliff at this point. There still is work done on the weekends for things that are down within PD. We need to respond to that on Saturdays and Sundays. We maintain that level of funding of five thousand to account for that. Everything else pretty much remained pretty flat. And that, that's how we think, this is not a wish list. This is a need list. Technology is going to be more critical going further and we're going to need to update and buy equipment to keep going. If anybody has any questions at this point, I'm more than available to answer anything you want. Cliff, if you have anything to add or if you want to update the board on projects that we're working on and things we need to build, what projects we have that have been pushed back because of this pandemic, feel free to speak.
Um, you covered most of it. I know that we have infrastructure upgrades that are pending. We already have the equipment in-house that was purchased, but just been put on hold temporarily since Joe and I aren't able to be in the office at the same time right now. Outside of that, some of the biggest things, some of the biggest IT expenditures are really software licensing, like Office three sixty-five licensing. Now we're kind of reliant upon Zoom licensing and that sort of thing. So those are all important things that are enabling us to do our jobs. And when I say do us, I mean all village staff that is working remotely. And we're just trying to do our best through this whole pandemic.
You know, Cliff, and I know that you, you got many of the boards and commissions tech savvy and enabled them to operate remotely too. And I really appreciate that.
Yep, no problem.
Does anybody have any questions for either Cliff or Augustino? None of the budget committee has any questions.
Sally, anything you want to share with the board?
Sally?
Thank you, Augie. No, thank you.
Laura?
You're muted.
Sorry, yeah, I muted my. No, not right now. I think you covered everything, Augie. I think we think we're good.
Thank you all for working very hard under difficult circumstances.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So two things that I want to point out. First of all, in the last, I would say six months or so, Augie, Laura and Jonathan have worked very hard on a couple of initiatives. Principally doing some audits to try to identify areas where we can correct in certain departments. And so I appreciate their work. I really do in that. And that's something that I'm not really sure to the extent that it was done in the past, but from the results that I'm getting, it's very extensive and it's very appreciated because it really does point out a couple of things that we need to correct and make sure that we move forward in the right direction. One thing for Cliff that I want to share with the board is that at the bottom of page forty-five, Cliff, you have network and desktop support that we used to pay for. And now you and Joe take care of that yourselves.
Yeah, that's correct.
But can you elaborate a little bit on that? Like, who was that that did that or?
Prior to two thousand fifteen, the village of Amerenak used to outsource IT and I actually worked for the company at the time that was providing the IT consulting. And as there was a growing need for more IT support within the village, they moved forward with creating or, I guess, hiring someone for a position that had been available or a past position, which was the IT coordinator position. And once I came into that role in the beginning, I mean, it was, there, there was quite a bit of work to, to get the network cleaned up and up and running where everything was going smoothly. And over the years, there has been less and less of a need for having outside consulting support. Because Joe and I have been taking care of a lot of the things in-house. I mean, one example is last summer, we actually did like an in-house cabling project to resolve a big problem that we were having with regards to network connectivity. And with collaboration between DPW, specifically our village electrician, Kevin Jamison, and myself, we were able to take a project that probably would have cost the village easily twenty thousand dollars. And we were able to do it for, I think, under four thousand dollars total. So those are the sorts of things that, that, I mean, Joe and I have been trying to plan out and trying to save the village money without having to outsource these sorts of things. So that line item originally though, that forty, I think you said forty-five thousand, that was.
I think it was thirty, Cliff.
Oh, thirty thousand. So yeah, my understanding of that line item is that was supposed to be for any extra support that might have been needed.
But now we have you and Joe.
Right.
I remember when you guys were doing that project with Kevin Jamison, it was, it was fun to watch because you were core drilling and you were running wires and it looked like a real electrician's job.
Yeah, yeah. That was a, there, there was a construction aspect to that and then there was a technical aspect. So it was a good marriage between both departments.
Yeah, it was fun to watch. I love work. I can watch it anytime. Anybody have any questions for the clerk treasurer's staff?
Or Jerry? Here's Victor. This is, when I see the introduction and the different departments, information technology has its own page. But I've always understood it's, it's part of the clerk treasurer's team. So that, that, is it, is there a department or is it just that it has a single page? Because all the other pages are departments. So I just want to see. It doesn't really matter as long as the work gets done and it doesn't get better as what we, we see every day. So that's not the point. It's just.
Sure. I, I can explain a little bit of that. Our secret weapon is Augie Fusco, who is also technologically savvy as well. He may not present himself that way, but he is. And so when, when there was an opportunity to break apart Cliff and have him supervise Joe, Augie and I came up to the, came up with an agreement that Augie would still participate in the, in the functions of, of central data processing, Cliff's department because, because Augie is also intimately involved in, in all of our technology needs and thankfully so. So it really is a collaboration where Augie supervises Cliff. But then, you know, if Cliff has a problem with Augie, then he comes to me and so we work it out. But it really is Augie and Cliff working together and the clerk treasurer basically supervising central data. Probably because I have a lack of understanding and I am pretty comfortable with that relationship.
Thank you, Jerry. That's, that's a great explanation and perfectly understood.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, folks from the clerk treasurer's department. Keep up the good work. I miss seeing all of you around, but I'd rather see you safe.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next up, the ever-popular village manager, Jerry Barberia.
I wish I was less popular. The, Dan, if you could share the colorful spreadsheet that we talked about earlier today with the board, this way they can pull it in front of them or just, just bring it up on the screen, actually.
Yeah, I'll bring it up in a second. Can everyone see that?
So Mayor, in, in, in the twelve thirty budget, in, in the manager's budget, what we had originally proposed was to hire an administrative intern in March of, of two thousand twenty-one to help us ramp up with some of the projects that the board has been asking us to do for a little while now. Specifically in, and principally geared towards water quality and things of that nature. And so what we did was, I figured that the lowest impact to the budget pre-March. nature. And so what we did was, I figured that the lowest impact to the budget pre-March 13 would be to add someone later on next spring to start to ramp up and get some of those projects done. We have taken that out of the budget. In addition to that, we wanted to complete the tree inventory with interns and I did have two interns lined up. Unfortunately, we are in a difficult situation where we may not have the luxury to complete the tree inventory this year. And so we took that out of the budget as well. There may be an opportunity in the future to be able to do that, but based on the outlook and what we're, what we're faced with, we had to really eliminate some of the wishes that we wanted in this, in this budget. As far as automotive repairs, we took that down to approximately, I think it was, so we, $500, we eliminated $2,000 out of that line. We had also additionally added a significant amount to labor attorney. There have been some labor issues that we've been dealing with and so we had a budgeted before the March 13 date additional money to be able to handle that. We're bringing that back down to, and I will be as judicious as possible with hiring a labor attorney. So we brought that down to last year's number. We also eliminated for this year and we can bounce back later on, but principally we eliminated see, click, fix out of our platform in order to, because we were going to couple that up with a seller. But since everyone knows the, what's going on with the seller, we figured that we would defer that for one year. So our total budget cut out of the manager's budget is $85,745, which is a reduction of 10.58% in order to help out, just like everyone else and every other department has helped out.
Well, I gotta say this, you don't ask anybody to do something you're not willing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Jer?
I had one question about the, how effective our grant writing consulting endeavor has been. It's coming up on two years now. And do we have any metrics on that?
Wait, you did receive a, oh, it was 1.8, $1.08 million grant with their assistance with the that they helped us with as far as the money that we need for the, the INI.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the solidated funding application coming up again in a couple of months. They've helped write a number of grants for recreation, for fire department. You know, the assistance of firefighters grant was just submitted within the last six weeks. So that's a big grant that's coming up. So they helped us with CDBG, although that we're usually pretty good with that one.
They've also, they've also offered to help for their, for their inclusive fee with our FEMA application. So we did already have one meeting with them regarding the ability for us to capture everything in our FEMA application when this, when this finally passes.
So that might be big, a big bonus.
Yeah.
That will.
That, that will be big because assistance in capturing everything.
Yeah, it's hard. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big deal. You know, it's just human nature. We'll miss something that, that they'll because they have experience with that with other municipalities and that's what's important.
Jerry, if we have an employee who misses work because of the pandemic, can we charge the time we pay that employee to FEMA?
So, so it's not to FEMA. It is through the CARES Act and it's up to $511 per day reimbursable. So if we have a, if we have an employee that's positive or we have an employee whose spouse is positive and must stay home, we of course have to pay that employee, but based on, you know, the guidelines of the state that the state has provided, but we can ask for reimbursement of $511 of that individual's daily salary.
Okay, so that's almost every employee.
Yeah, we're keeping track. We keep in track and we will be submitting that. We'll be submitting that. In addition to that, we had that, I think it was, it was an email a couple of days ago where CARES Act would basically reimburse most municipalities over $500,000 when obviously that list isn't as big as people think it is. So what Dan and I did was we submitted the application, even though we're only a village of 20,000 people, we submitted that application before the deadline. The deadline was Friday at midnight. This way, if there is any funding, we're already in line for it, regardless of whether we're a small village or, or, you know, funding a large city. So we're looking for everything and everywhere to try to get money back.
Thank you. Thanks.
Do you have any questions for Jer?
Going to follow up quickly on the issue of the grant writer, because I had, I had that same question. I remember, I actually, we, we found them at one of those ICOMs and it was suggested three years ago and they started with us or two years ago, maybe three. And I think they've, they've been great and they're probably gonna be more useful now. And I only couldn't, not concerned, but just, just along the same lines is just, you need to be very proactive with them because they've now, now they, they have a big portfolio. Everybody is with. And then when I see their reports, it's more of the same grants. So INI, for example, we, we got, actually Dan Sarnoff got, we got one right before because those ones are very technical.
Yeah.
So it's difficult, you have to judge them not for the amount, but mostly of how they really treat you as a customer, how they can tailor things. Some river towns are really good at getting lots of grants, so I think continue to be very proactive with them so that we make that good use of those 36. I know you're on it, but just, just.
I completely agree. No, I completely agree. And, and so Dan, Dan heads off our internal grant writing committee. It's basically a group of our employees and staff. We, he meets twice a month discussing and looking at grants. This way we can follow up and keep things moving because that's really, that's the secret weapon when you're doing, when you're looking for grants or you're applying for grants, is that you have to keep on top of it and make sure that the deadlines don't pass. In addition to that, every time there's a police or fire grant, we direct Allison to the police chief and to the fire chief and she works one-on-one with them as well. So there's three main points of contact in the village as Dan Sarnoff, Chief Leahy, and Chief Primrose. So we're trying to grab as much as we can whenever we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, ideas? Dan Sarnoff, could you please take your screen down?
Absolutely.
That's okay. Thank you. No hand up over there?
Mayor, I have one item.
Yeah, go ahead.
One item that we didn't discuss was looking at our general liability insurance. So earlier this year, a few of us got together. Dan, Laura, Augie, typically the four of us work with insurance and on insurance. And what we did was we met with our current insurance broker and then we brought in someone else. And so we've been able to reduce our general insurance liability, general liability insurance by over $200,000. And that's also included in this budget.
Great. Thank you. That helps a lot.
It's all of us.
That's 10% right there of the shortfall.
It's huge.
The projected shortfall. All right. It looks like that concludes tonight's festivities. Thank you all for working hard on this. Thank you, staff especially, for all the hard work that you've done to bring this back under control. You know, God knows what the future holds, but I'm glad that we have the people around us that we have who know what they're doing. It makes life a lot easier. I need a motion to close this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Night.
Everybody. See you tomorrow.
I will not be here tonight, not tomorrow night. But, you know, I'll, I'll see you all on Thursday night. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.